Welcome you all to the Middleton City Hall. And I'm going to open the meeting of Middleton Common Council for June 4th, 2019 to order. And the first item on the agenda is the roll call.
Here. Burke, absent. Fazard.
Oh, here, sorry.
West.
Present.
Olson.
Here.
Ramsey.
Here.
Sullivan.
Here.
Nelson.
Here.
So, the next item is the comments from the City General President. They're limited to three minutes per speaker. So, I'm going to start with honoring one of our long-term Public Works Director and who has been serving the city for a long time. He couldn't make it to the meeting last time, so could you please stand up? Hank Simon. Honoring Hank Simon's service to the City of Milton on the Community Development Authority. Whereas Hank Simon has faithfully and honorably served the City of Milton and the Community Development Authority for 15 years. And whereas Hank has utilized his knowledge of Milton to enhance the decision-making process of the Community Development Authority. And whereas Hank's service has played an important role in ensuring our city continues to be a model community for Dane County, for Wisconsin, and the country. And whereas Hank's thoughtful and dedicated service has been of great value to the Community Development Authority. Now therefore, I, Gurdie, Board Mayor of the City of Milton, proclaim honor and commend Hank Simon for his distinguished tenure of public service to the City of Milton and the Community Development Authority. The City of Milton is fortunate Hank served this community so as to leave an enduring legacy of success. And we had already adopted his proclamation, and let's give him a big hand and congratulate. So, we've got a proclamation for you and also got a clock. So, you want to come over here or...
Well, sure, up here. Can we get through there?
Yes.
You can make it.
Yeah. And I have to hold on?
I think so. I think so. By the way, you didn't, many people didn't know Hank was MIT graduate and also West Point graduate.
Wow.
Wow.
Thank you.
Hank wanted to say a couple of words just for about 30 seconds, so...
I wanted to stand up someplace where I could hold on to something. I came as a whole person to this place, and I'm leaving with a cane and a kind of a little bit of attire which is harder to take off than it is to put on. And a tremendous debt of gratitude to everyone that I worked with in my 30 years here. I spent 13 years as Public Works Director, then I got a few years off, and then about 15 years with the committee that we just talked about. And the one thing I've taken away, or I want to take away, and by the way, we're still living here, my wife Judy and I are still living here, is that this place has become our home. This place is probably, how can I say this, one of the best places I've ever found to live. The people here, this city is small enough that people are friendly and get to know each other. And it's large enough so that more things can happen, that we have enough money and we have enough people to be able to do things. I just heard the issue of the swimming pool and the problems we've got, you know, at the last minute with the swimming pool. But the system will work through it. The system will work through it. You all will, all you new people. And it's just great to be a part of this city and to be able to say, "I'm a citizen here. I worked here, and I tried to make it as best as I could, tried to make it better than I could. And then I'm retiring here and I'm staying here." And I owe a lot to that guy sitting up there, mayor, the mayor, because I want to tell you something publicly that I think is important for everybody to remember, and that is, most leaders are kind of afraid to make change. And this gentleman here took it upon himself to say, "We need to continue to have new blood here in the city." And I said, "I think that's the greatest thing he could say." Because every organization needs new blood periodically. We get it through elections, but we also get it through all of the committees that are appointed, all the people on the committees. And I was one, and I felt, "Well, it's time for me to step down." When I start using this thing because of imbalance problems, I said, "Well, you know..." And then the issue of, "How much energy do I have at 74 versus what I had 30 years ago?" It wasn't, it's not the same now. And so, Mr. Mayor, I commend you for that, for all you've done with respect to bringing in new blood to the city, and I think it's going to be a lot better for it.
Thank you, Hank. You're great. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, so now Brian Wakem.
Hello, Brian Wakem, 7112 Kanil Trail, current president of the Middleton Ridge Homeowners Association. I'd like to start off with thanking our new alder, Luke. Oh, public comments, correct?
Yeah, 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 sorry.
Yeah, we would like to thank you on behalf of the Homeowners Association. We'd like to thank you for being a great communication partner and representing Middleton Ridge, so thank you. Happy to hear in the last planning committee meeting that the town of Springfield and the City of Middleton are committing to work together on the quarry issue and the future plans related to the traffic issues. So, that was very positive to see that and the YouTube videos. As to the quarry, Middleton Ridge, we would really appreciate if the city can listen and take our concerns into consideration. I think you may have some folks who have some opinions tonight, and we'll share it with you. And I'd appreciate if you take those considerations when reaching out to Dane County as well as you hire material. One of the most significant events that concerns the HOA is the condition of high road. With everything that's going on, you talked about high traffic, expansion and whatnot, that increased traffic and from the late winter and early spring weather, we've seen a really significant deterioration of the road. And it's almost become a safety issue. And there's a lot of people concerned about that, especially we have bicyclists, we have young people in the neighborhood. So, we hope that both the city and the town can be proactive and working on this topic, hopefully in the future development plan. So, we'd like to just share that with the council then. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. So, the next one is Kitty Tyson.
Thank you. I am Kitty Tyson. I live in Sand Hill Condominiums, which is on Tideman Pond. I'm here to talk about the discussion of how to solve some of the flooding issues that we've had in the ponds, topic coming up much later, I guess. I wanted to mention first and foremost, the concept of buying a bigger pump is something that I've tried very hard to understand and get my hands around what and why. Because we've gone through the bigger pump situation when we rented a pump. We don't just buy a pump. This would require that we develop an intake system, which means bringing water across Gammon Road, which means dealing with a road we just got done fixing, or fixing. And the output, much more important, the output, where is it going to go and how is it going to get through Middleton? Are we going to run it through the streets and dig up all the streets and on and on and on? The second part of that is, we've gone through this once before. We have experience with the idea of a bigger pump, and we didn't really solve that very well. We started first with the railroad tracks and trying to run our water onto the railroad track bed, which scared me to death, the potential for destabilizing our railroad tracks. We found out that didn't work because it ran downward into the pond, back to the pond. So, then we solved it temporarily, I think. I don't know if we have a long-term solution, but what we did then was to run it past Elmalon, up the street until we got to the top of the hill, and I have photos of this whole system if anyone wants to see them. We got over the top of the hill, ran the pipe down through the gutter, and then opened up the pipe and let it run along the gutter until it got to a drain. And as far as I know, it looked like it was headed for Madison. I don't know if Madison ever caught on to the fact that we were dumping water into Madison, but that's a whole different issue. To me, the solution isn't just buying a bigger pump and making a bigger system. It has to address what you're going to do with it. The thing, the second point I wanted to bring up was the fact that Councilman Burke, our councilman, put together a meeting a week or two ago at which Paul Nelson, County Supervisor, attended. And among the various, very informational points he brought up was the fact that Dane County has nowhere to put their water in Lakes Mendota, Manona, were part of a bigger chain of global warming or whatever you want to call it. It's an issue that Madison is going to look into buying farmland for, he said, so that they can dredge some of their lakes into, in whatever format they're going to do it, and ultimately create more capacity in the lakes for Madison to deal with. Now, that's Madison solving Madison's problem. We're still back here. I read an article this weekend in the Wisconsin State Journal that talked about the fact that somebody, I've forgotten who now, is dredging Mud Lake along the Belt Line at the Broadway area where Broadway and the Belt Line connect. Mud Lake is down there, and somebody's dredging it. There was very interesting discussion about the fact that they will be putting the silt in boxes and letting it dry for a couple of days and carting it off. Okay, so that's the bigger picture. What about Middleton? I only have two more points here, sorry to drag on. We, in my opinion, we need to solve it here. We need to figure out how to deal with our problem, just like Madison's trying to deal with their problem. Maybe we do it jointly, maybe we do it independently, I don't know. But what I look at is that all three of the ponds we've been talking about, Strickers, Tideman, and ultimately Lakeview, I understand, is where we have been piping, not the huge capacity from flooding last fall, but just normally we pump into a storm drain that dumps into Lakeview Park. And I couldn't figure out where it comes out there, but Lakeview is also a problematic situation. All three of those ponds have associated athletic fields. All three of those have been soggy for years, off and on, at least for years. My thought is, why don't we think about the idea of dredging all those ponds to a depth of about 10 to 15 feet? And then locating the silt that comes out over the athletic fields in a contour-like format that very big sophisticated athletic fields go for, so that they will naturally drain, get them up high, so they'll naturally drain, and then put that drain fields or a drainage system around them so that the water won't back up into people's backyards. Beyond that, if there's any excess silt, use it for bringing up the trails that we've got that are still underwater from last August. I know Tideman still has one, the south side of it. My last point are just benefits and issues, just a couple of them off the bat. I've heard people say regarding dredging, "It takes way too long to dry." That article about, in the Wisconsin State Journal, said that they're going to be taking the dredged silt, putting it in boxes, and it will take days to dry. That's just boxes. I don't know how big the boxes are, but that's one aspect. I've heard other people talk about the fact that it takes years to dry. That Lakeview Park field was dredged once upon a time, and it took years to get to where it is. I don't know. I think we ought to look at it. Second point or issue is that the silt will reaccumulate very quickly. I don't think that's necessarily true, and if we do go down 10 to 15 feet, you know, if the silt's coming back, maybe it comes back two, three feet deep, I don't know. You know, we ought to look at the idea. If it takes, say, 10, 15, 20 years, maybe we come back and revisit it in 10, 15, 20 years, or maybe we rethink it at that time and find another solution. I don't know. Just one, two more points, two more issues. One is, it deepens the pond by more than seven feet if you dredge it to 10 to 15. And the extreme value of that to some of us who are around these ponds is that we have lotus blossoms that are coming in and infiltrating. We learned through a Penny Klein study a few years back, UW students determined that we were going to be inundated with lotus blossoms if the ponds were less than seven feet deep because that's how long they will extend their roots down. And so, if we go to 10 to 15 feet with a little bit of ability to build up, we can keep the lotus blossoms and keep it cleaning the water just around the outside and still have deeper ponds. And the last point is, people say it's too costly. We don't know what it costs. This is probably a smaller area, each of these little ponds, to dig down deep than a lot of these other options that people have seen. And we ought to look at and evaluate the fact that it's actually solving three problems. It's solving the flood problem, it's solving the athletic fields being soggy and not usable, and it's dealing with our lotus blossom concerns. You aren't going to want those in Lakeview Park, you know, especially if...
Thank you, Kitty. Thank you. Thank you so much. So, the next one is Janet. Janet Stalker Warner?
She doesn't...
Okay. Okay, all right. Larry Henning.
This is just another added encouragement. My name is Larry Henning. I live in 1630 View, 1634 Pondview Court on the west side of Tideman's Pond. And I'm here just to urge your continued support for both short-term and long-term efforts to mitigate the elevated pond levels at Tideman's and Strickers Ponds, including perhaps an engineering study on what could be the long-term solutions. On May 4th, Alder Robert Burke convened a well-attended public hearing in this space regarding the pond issues and possible solutions. At that hearing, folks from our neck of the woods expressed urgent concerns about the pond levels, not only for reasons of environmental integrity, but also safety. As you know, last August, even with considerable sandbagging, homes around the ponds still remained at risk for flooding. I voted for the April 2nd referendum, yes, because of concern for the well-being of the whole city, but also with the explicit expectation that the referendum would directly or indirectly free up funds to address our pond issues.
Thank you, Larry. So, the next one is Emily Mayer.
Hello. You're going to notice a theme here. I'm Emily Mayer of 7312 Voss Parkway, and I'm here to advocate for the Stricker and Tideman Pond system and request that the city address the issues that continue to plague this system after almost 10 months from the August flood. Little has been done to address the inefficiencies in the stormwater system that is Stricker and Tideman Ponds. Water levels remain high, and the persistent high water continues to put public and private land at risk and prevent the restoration of the surrounding park areas around these ponds. I have three main points, and the first being, it's just a continued frustration that no significant progress has really been made toward a pump or drainage solution at Tideman. Progress to identify a solution for the Tideman outlet seems to have stalled at the point of RFPs. In May, the Water Resource Management Committee seems to have identified three pretty viable options for a solution and actually prioritized getting an RFP out to consultants to evaluate these solutions, and it does not seem to have progressed beyond that. And so, I would encourage you to determine what the holdup is and to please figure out how the city can move this process along. Clearly, there's a lot of people really concerned about this. I think figuring out a way to move more water out of that system is critically important to be better positioned for future storm events. Recently, I've actually heard some people point to the fact that many of the paths and the boardwalk around the pond are not submerged now, finally, after a number of months, and that's fabulous, but I caution you to not look at that as an indicator that the water is under control. Because as the other speaker mentioned, those paths and park fields around the ponds continue to be like a wet sponge. They're soggy, they're saturated, they're impassable. And in fact, there are actually some areas that have water flowing out of them, you know, just out of the ground all the time. Whether it's rained recently or not, the water is flowing out of them. That seems to indicate that the soil in the area just remains so saturated and, you know, probably means that those areas are useless as infiltration points for rain and runoff from other storms. So, we need to restore this whole system by clearing out the excess water from Tideman to allow that groundwater to move through the system and just give us capacity to be able to handle the rains that we know are coming. The second speaks to the referendum with the Stormwater Utility Board, and it seems that at a most recent meeting, they declined to authorize funding or just kind of determined that maybe funding was not appropriate because there wasn't really true damage at Tideman. And, you know, I think you can point at the pump and say the pump is actually working, but if you look at the system as a whole, it's not working the way it's supposed to work, and that is the definition of damage. The system is not functioning at the level it's supposed to be functioning at, you know, to help protect the areas around it. So, I know a lot of us voted for that referendum to pass because we had a hope that this would provide some relief, and we would just encourage the Stormwater Utility Board to, you know, make sure that they're honoring kind of that promise that was outlined in the advertisements for the referendum to provide funding to these systems. One last point, mosquitoes. I mean, we, everybody knows we're going to have mosquitoes, but there's so much stagnant water sitting in the parks and around the ponds right now. I know Madison has done some abatement in the four bays on the south side of Stricker. I just would encourage the city to consider getting ahead of this public health issue and look at mosquito abatement for the stagnant water. Thank you so much. Have a good night.
Thank you, Emily. Next one is Bob Lyons.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Barar and council members. I will continue the Tideman-Stricker theme for a moment. I think you get the sense from comments you've heard this evening and that you've heard at prior council meetings that there is still a great deal of frustration in the neighborhoods regarding the lack of activity to get something moving with respect to correcting the deficiencies in our infrastructure around those ponds. First of all, I should say, my name is Bob Lyons. I live on Pondview Court, which is on Tideman's Pond. And by way of full disclosure, I am a member of the City Public Works Committee and... What's my other committee? One other one.
CLC?
CLC. So many, I forget. I'm here as a civilian tonight. The remarks I'm going to make are my own. They have no bearing on any action that either of those committees has taken or any of the staff have taken. The big problem is the infrastructure in the pond. We've got to do something about setting up a system that will remove water quickly and efficiently from those ponds. There are two actions that I think the council could take this evening that would get us moving on the road to doing that. The first is, I understand you have a recommendation now from the Stormwater Utility Board to set the fee at $45. There apparently, that requires your action because the referendum that passed set up to $45. I voted for the referendum. I think everybody who voted for the referendum assumed the fee was going to be $45. So, I hope you will pass that this evening. Secondly, I attended the meeting of the Water Resources Management Commission on May 15th. And the commission on that date, I think, reached consensus on two important items. First of all, it decided to prioritize the water level concerns at Tideman's and Strickers Pond over those at Graber Pond. I'm sure there are issues at Graber Pond as well, but the consensus of the Water Management Resource Commission was to prioritize Tideman's and Strickers Pond. That action is described in the minutes of that meeting, which are posted on the city's website. The second thing that the Water Resource Management Commission did at that meeting was to come to consensus that the commission should recommend that, to the council, that the city send out requests for proposals to various consulting engineers to try to get the ball rolling on infrastructure improvements that might tend to alleviate our problems with these ponds. That did not appear in the minutes of that committee meeting, and I was surprised to see that when I read the minutes of the meeting. So, I contacted the chair of that committee and spoke with him about what he thought the committee had done with respect to the Tideman's and Stricker Pond issues at that meeting. He told me without any prompting that they had done two things. One, prioritize Stricker and Tideman's Pond over Graber Pond, which reflected in the minutes. And secondly, to recommend to the council that proposals get sent out to consulting engineers to begin to address some ways that we can improve the infrastructure of those ponds. So, I don't know that you need a formal recommendation from Water Resource Management Commission to take some action tonight, but I would urge you to take the action. Send out the RFPs to the consulting engineers, get the ball rolling, and then we can come up with some solutions, hopefully, to evaluate, to see what makes sense to do engineering-wise and budget-wise and everything else. But we'll never get anything done if we don't get the process started. And a logical place to get the process started, it seems to me, is to get the proposals from some consulting engineers about what they think we can do to alleviate these problems. And I would add that one of the suggestions that the Water Resource Management Committee specifically said should be in the proposals is a dredging option for Tideman's Pond. So, I would hope that you would move on those two issues, the stormwater utility fee and the request for proposals, to see if we can get the ball rolling on the other issue of infrastructure improvement. So, I thank you for your consideration in this regard, and if you have any questions, I'd be happy to try to answer them. If not, I hope you'll move the ball forward here a little bit.
Does anybody have questions for Bob? Thank you, Bob.
All right. Thank you.
Anybody else who wants to speak, who hasn't signed up? Anybody else who wants to speak? Okay, we're going to move. Could you please come here and identify yourself, and you have three minutes.
So, thank you for the opportunity. I'll just speak quickly to save everyone time. Just a couple of things. I'm in the...
Name and address.
And, Cody, 4430 Yukon Way, Middleton Ridge subdivision. I just want to mention a couple of things from the point of view of the Middleton Ridge subdivision. We also have the pond consideration. I think that's being worked on, but I would like to see something done there. High road is something that we would also share concern over. We use that road quite extensively as well. And then the third on the quarry, I don't see anything in the notes here tonight, but I think there's a concern about the expansion from the annoyance perspective. If we could look at the state statutes and the state rules on blasting, there's a reasonable annoyance clause. There's quite a bit of sound from the blasts and the ground vibrations and things like that. I just want to share the concern of the neighborhood that lives next to that, that we're very concerned about that. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. Anybody else who wants to speak? Anybody else who wants to speak? I'm going to close this part of the meeting. And the next item is the approval or the consent agenda.
Move approval.
Second.
All those in favor of... All those in favor of approving the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, so the motion passes unanimously. Now, should we just go ahead and move to the resolution item two, or do we do the proclamations first? Well, let's go ahead and do the proclamation, and then we go to that one, so. So, the first one is Planet Symphony Day. This is one of the, well, anyway, I will read the proclamation, Planet Symphony Day 2019, where the climate change crisis is the biggest threat the planet faces today, causing worry to billions across the planet. And whereas, this includes millions of students who are demanding climate justice and a safe planet for their and subsequent generations. And whereas, the Planet Symphony Orchestra is the world's largest arts sciences social initiative to combat the environmental emergency with members from 60 countries. And whereas, the Planet Symphony Orchestra consists of almost 2,000 Grammy and other award-winning musicians, visual and performing artists of classical and popular industries, scientists, environmentalists, journalists, business and social leaders, as well as students from 60 countries, including United States. And whereas, hundreds of members of Planet Symphony from USA, UK, and many other countries have united in massive global music production on over 50 instruments in the performance of the Climatrix Symphony by Chitra Bina Ravikan that symbolizes climate dissonance and calls for environmental action. And whereas, the United States has been committed to preserve, protect such diversity and innovations over the last several decades, whereas Milton desires to uphold this spirit and tradition in Wisconsin by supporting this historic arts-science-social initiative of the Planet Symphony to ensure a safe planet for all future generations. Now, therefore, we proclaim June 22 of February from this year as a Planet Symphony Day in the city of Milton and urge all citizens to support effort to care for our trees and woodlands and to support our city's cultural program. And we further, we are, further, we urge all citizens to take part in diverse cultural events to gladden the arts and promote the well-being of present and future generation. This proclamation was adopted at a regular meeting of the Middleton City Council on 4th of June 2019. Is it a motion to approve?
Motion to approve. Second.
Is it a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor of this motion, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, so the motion passes. Now, the next proclamation is which our, our elder Luke asked for, and this is the proclamation honoring the life of Appleton firefighter Mitchell Frank Lundgaard. Whereas Mitch was a 14-year veteran of the Appleton Fire Department, who was recently promoted to driver engineers, and whereas Mitch was called to public service after the tragic events of September 11, 2001. Whereas Mitch was husband of 12 years to his high school sweetheart and a father of three young boys, and whereas Mitch was killed in the line of duty after responding to a medical call at a Valley Transit Center in Appleton on Wednesday, May 15. And whereas, Mitch enjoyed coaching his children in sports and taking them family trips to Disney World, and whereas first responders from as far away as Arizona, as well as from Milton, traveled to Mitch's funeral on Monday, May 20, to pay their respects, and whereas the Appleton Fire Department honored Lundgaard with an award of honor. Now, therefore, I, Mayor Gurdeep Barar, on behalf of the Milton Common Council, do hereby honor Mitchell Frank Lundgaard, who gave his life in the service of his community on 4th day of June 2019. On behalf of all the residents of Milton, we extend our deepest sympathy to the Lundgaard family and Mitchell's colleagues at the Appleton Fire Department, and extend our sincere thanks for his dedicated and valuable public service. May Mitchell Frank Lundgaard rest in peace, knowing that he gave his life serving humankind. This proclamation was adopted at a regular meeting of the Milton Common Council on 4th day of June 2019. Is it a motion to approve?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, so the motion passes. So, if it's okay with you, I'm going to take the, there are so many people here to listen to it, the under resolutions, item number two. Is that okay with everyone? It's 2019, 29, Stormwater Utility Budget Amendment Resolution and Establishment of Funding Priorities.
Move approval is recommended by the Stormwater Utility Board?
And finance.
And finance.
Second.
Okay, let's start the discussion on this one. So, what were the projects which were approved by the Stormwater Utility? I had four questions, five questions for Larry here, and so Larry, I ask you the same, and I would like your answer here. Do you feel in terms of the scope of the projects, use of the funds of number one, Stormwater Utility, and the number two is different? And second, which is related, do we have to keep those funds from one and two separate?
I have recommended to Bill that he do so. He has convinced me that he doesn't feel there is a need for a separate fund in the city book of accounts, but as a practical matter, the funds will, he will keep track of the funds and from which fund they're coming. I also said that there is nothing about the occurrence of the disastrous flooding last August that suggests that it would not be equally appropriate for the council to decide with the recommendation of the Stormwater Utility Board that funds in, that were previously authorized at, in the $15 per equivalent runoff unit, could not also be used to deal with the maintenance problems that the city is suffering from at this point in time.
So, my next question was the clear definition of the projects where the funds from number two, Stormwater, may be used, and you answered that, and I would like you to let us know here again. For example, the projects proposed or suggested about the Tiedemann Pond, they will fall under it.
That is my opinion. I don't, it's my opinion that the city should not narrowly construe Stormwater disaster to be confined to situations where a city facility was physically changed by the, by the flooding. Thus, in my opinion, a flood which did not damage any existing facilities is just as much a flood with just as much impact on Middleton properties as a situation where, like we have in the Fessin Branch Conservancy, where bridges were uprooted, where hills left off. Those are, those are certainly worthy things to be repaired, but it, there's, in my mind, no distinction whatsoever, so long as it was caused by the flood, its damage to city facilities.
So, so as far as, I can see there's a, there was a draft list of potential maintenance and repair projects, so you don't see any problem, including Graber and Tiedemann Pond, well, elevation and control study, RFPs.
And Strickers. No, I do not. I do not.
Okay. So, and they were recommended by the Water Sources Management Board in any case, so Luke, you want to, or somebody want to make a motion to include that as a part of this motion?
I'll make my motion.
I'll second that.
Okay. So, any discussion on that one now?
I would like to say that I appreciate that the ponds will be considered as well if we're looking at future prevention measures. And part of the reason that I'm sharing is from our district, we obviously don't have a pond, well, we have ponds in Lakeview Park, but one of the things we have an issue with in my district is that houses were flooded from behind the lake from the swale, because the water was rushing from Lakeview and from the other pond. I'm not sure about all the system waterways, but water was gushing towards the lake and the swale overwhelmed, and that actually is how they flooded the houses first. When the water receded, then the lake came over and flooded houses from the other side. So, I'm not saying to throw in the swale, but what I'm saying is, is having seen that, I was surprised that that is how it happened, and I could see where the frustration is with the ponds, especially if they're just now getting used. So, I appreciate the insight and thoughtfulness.
And by the way, that is already moving forward. We already gave the contract where RFP, so Sean, there was a, the RFP was given for that Baskerville Harbor. I think there's a funding there that they're looking into the design and other very options, so that's already moving forward, so. Any other questions or comments?
So, Gurdeep, I understand the frustration of these ponds, I really do, but it was the Stormwater Utilities' task to come up with a list of projects for this year, and the Stormwater Utility did that, and they're listed in this memo, and so part of this is a budget constraint. So, the utility identified $1.1 million in spending for this year, and it also identified that there was about $460,000 that would not be spent this year, but it recommended that those funds be made available as the matching portion of the DNR grants that we already have in-house. So, are you asking with this, is someone asking with these amendments to make a referral to Stormwater Utility to consider the pond issues for future budgets? Or is this something that is, that you're recommending that water, or I'm sorry, Stormwater Utility reprioritize to include pond issues for this year?
Well, this is part of approval. It has been nine months and, how many days? It's nine and a half months, and early on, I guess it was last fall, at least my understanding... Could I please speak? I will give you a chance.
I have not said a thing.
Okay, but...
I just want to be recognized when you get through speak.
Yes, I will, so thank you. So, I was under the understanding that our Public Works Department was already moving forward with this one, so there was a, one of the firms, they were looking at the inlet size, they were looking at whether, whether to have a variable velocity pump, larger pump, and all those options. This was happening last fall, and then all of a sudden, and we were using that, the general contingency funds, which were, which we had allocated for the, taking care of that emergency issues, and then all of a sudden, I find out that it somehow got stopped, and nobody was ever told. I mean, this was, these ponds are still flooded. These ponds, city's responsible to take care of them. When we had this referendum, they are mentioned there that the funds will support the repairs of Fessin Branch Creek Corridor, Tiedemann Pond, Stricker Pond, and other stormwater management, and not to do it is completely irresponsible.
Nobody's suggesting that we don't do this. I'm, I'm asking you, what are you trying to do? Are you trying to reprioritize the ponds over the, over the projects that the Utility Board has already suggested that we do?
They are already here in the list. I'm not asking anything here, and what I'm asking is that City Council is the final authority. City Council add these two things and approve, period. That's it. That's what I'm asking. Those citizens are fed up.
Where's, where's the funding for it, then?
Well, we will use this 460,000 out of this money, and you are simply asking RFP, RFP is not costing hundreds of thousands of dollars.
My God.
And I actually want to find out, Sean, where is the, you or the Gary or somebody was working on RFP, where is it now?
Prioritize these ahead of everything else.
How far are we and when it will be? Do we have any timeline on when is it to be done? I mean, there has to be some, some action taken on that one. Where, where are we with that RFP?
We, we don't have an RFP drafted.
When would we have it?
That I can't answer.
Okay, Mike, you want to?
Okay. I talked to Gary Huth about it, and he's going to be drafting it in the very near future, so this next week, he anticipates getting it out.
So, you have a timeline, seven days?
This next week.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Susan?
Okay, I'd like to say, as Chair of Stormwater Utility, the city experienced extensive flooding across the entire city. It was not just Tiedemann and Stricker Pond. The Stormwater Utility is looking at all of that. So, a priority has been the Creek Corridor, because that is representing, as a rough estimate, three-fourths of the land within the city. Everything west of the Belt Line goes through Creek Corridor. All of the stormwater from a lot of the older part of Middleton, as addition, in addition to what is north of the creek, flows into the Creek Corridor. There was incredible damage down there. We have prioritized as priority repairing Donna Drive Pond, which was completely blown out, so there is no stormwater facility there. Yes, there's not flooding at the moment, but water comes through there uncontained. Additionally, the Park Street scour, we have got culverts under the road, you know, where the water comes out from the road that directs the water directly at that bank. Every time there's a rain, that is a damage and risk of getting further damaged. We've got to get those repaired because they're serving a large portion of the city, and unfortunately, those citizens are not in here asking for that. But we have to be responsible and look at the entire city and proportion it. I would like to say for Graber Pond, we have documented evidence in our records that houses were actually breached. I heard a gentleman tonight say that only at Tiedemann, they were at risk of being breached. So, we need to look, I'm sensing, or at least my own opinion, is we need to look at where the dam, risk is greatest. Yes, we do need to do something for Tiedemann and Stricker. We need to have engineers design it. It's not going to be a cheap fix in terms of what needs to be done there. I have asked one of our stormwater engineer consultants, Eric Thompson, of what needs to be done. He was, and I, he hasn't looked at it, but it could easily involve new pump, new inlet, and then finding a way to get that water down to Lake Mendota. That's gonna be very expensive. The other thing I'd like to say, we have yet to collect a single penny from the Stormwater Utility, from the referendum. We are using at the moment... We are using at the moment money that was allocated for projects to be done this year, which has simply been postponed, such as dredging South Pond, which collects all the water that comes to us from Madison. That's a huge problem. We need to be sure that pond is functional. And we put off some smaller ones. So I think we need to look at the big picture, not just one little tiny part of the city when we prioritize this.
Thank you, Susan. So to answer your, let's start with Donna Pond. So it has been addressed. We already gave the contract. It's getting fixed. Let's go to the, the, close to the Park Street that, that hill there. We are going to be approving this tonight. And it was post-pro from last meeting, just for various technical reasons. And, uh, you've mentioned about the South Pond. By the way, the Stormwater Resources Management Board worked on that pond. And they, even after doing various studies, they found that it did not need any dredging at that time. Maybe it does now, but it was, let me finish. It was just last year or a little before a year when it was, when that, when that study was done. And the, the third part, fourth part is to say, this is Tiedemann and Stricker, and all these ponds are only small part of the city, including Graber. That's very misleading. This constitute three districts in the, in the city here, not just a, just a small part, that district, one, two, and three. And by the way, the Stormwater Utility has yet to spend a single penny on these ponds, even though Stormwater Utility has been in place for, for five years, whatever. Mike, your turn.
I would just like.
Yours. Yeah, thank you.
Can I ask a couple of questions for clarification, please?
Yes.
Yes.
Uh, on these current and pending projects, um, where are we in the process of those? Are the, in other words, is all the engineering work done?
No.
It's sitting there.
Well, actually, yes, it has, right? So Donna, so Donna Drive.
The Donna Drive.
Donna Drive and the tow protection, the engineering's done, right? There's, they're going out. We're awarding the, we've awarded the bid for Donna Drive. So there's some construction oversight engineering involved with that. The tow protection at, at, uh, at Park. If that, if it's approved tonight, then, so first of all, the, all the engineering is completed. The pre-construction engineering is completed. There'll be construction oversight engineering as well, right? So I hope that answers your question. That.
Answers my question perfectly. Thank you. So these projects are ready to go.
Those are ready to go. Can I make a comment on?
I'm, I'm not done.
Can I make a comment about the South Pond?
Look, could Dan finish it, please?
I would like to provide the information.
You're done, Dan? Are you done? Or you still have more to say?
Point that I want to make is that these projects are ready to go. They have all the design work done. They're ready to be put out for bid. Tiedemann's Pond isn't. Having said that, there's no reason why we can't start the process and put out an RFP. But we have these projects that are ready to go. So to put these projects that are ready to go aside, I, I think would be a mistake. Having said that, I, we can certainly move forward, looking at Tiedemann and Grabers and putting it out in RFP. So we have an idea of where we're at. Because at this point, we have no clue what that's going to cost. We have no clue what the budget amount is going to be. We're shooting in the dark here. So my, my thought is, we put out an RFP for those projects, and we continue with the ones that we've already done all the legwork for. I mean, I don't really think that this is all that kind of, we can do more than one thing at a time.
Thank you, Dan. So you are absolutely right as.
I, I.
You're done?
Bill, Susan.
Thank you, Dana.
Susan, go ahead.
Okay, on South Pond, before the flood occurred, we knew that it didn't need dredging. That is not necessarily the case after the flood, and that needs to get looked at. In fact, the city administrator has told me it was filled up with dirt or with sediment. That is a major stormwater facility that in this discussion we're ignoring. But that's taking a major amount of water from the city of Middleton, or Madison, that goes, includes the Black Hawk neighborhood, all of around Madison, west of the Belt Line for sure, going all the way to Mineral Point Road. That's a tremendous amount of water that came through and caused a huge amount of damage out in the business park when all of that went through the railroad pressel. And it came in as a wall of water, caused huge damage. We can't ignore that. That's what I'm saying. We have to look at all of these things. And that is affecting a huge amount of the city.
So my understanding, though, is we can, we can move forward with an RFP and do, that's not, the, the RFPs wouldn't be mutually exclusive to the South Pond.
No, but we, what I am concerned about with, that I have been hearing is that we need to focus on Tiedemann and Stricker first. And I'm saying, we've got lots of areas that need to be looked at. Graber Pond in your district, Baskerville Harbor in Emily's District, the creek corridor, which my district borders, there's lots of them.
Okay, so I, I don't, okay, Mike, go ahead.
All right, I, the big picture, I think we need to talk about. We haven't really done this in a while. And with the April 2nd referendum, uh, results, and I thank all the folks who said that they voted for it, uh, that makes a big difference. And I don't think it's really sunk in yet for the staff or for the council. But Bill and I have been talking, and we've shared this with the mayor. We have the ability to borrow, uh, starting this, late this fall, early, um, in next year, to resolve a lot of these problems based upon the new revenue stream that you've approved, or you're in the process of approving at $45 per ERU tonight. That additional $30 ERU makes a big difference. Also, what will make a difference is when we finally do get FEMA reimbursements. Now, we don't have word of FEMA reimbursements, but we're doing all the hard work, the legwork. And that's a big part of the reason why the staff has been focused on getting all of that submitted so that we're eligible to get those funds. And why we haven't worked on engineering of other things because we didn't have the money previously. Now we do. So it makes sense that we're focusing on Donna Drive and the tow protection of Park Street. Those projects are likely to be FEMA reimbursed at a very high level. Maybe not the full 87 and a half percent, but probably, you know, 75 to 80% of that is going to be reimbursed because those were engineered, uh, well, I should say Donna Drive's engineered. Park Street is perhaps less, based on whether or not they, they calculate that it was an engineered project to begin with. But, um, so we have sufficient funds, not only in that, but as Larry provided the opinion earlier, from the existing Stormwater Utility funds. We should be in a position this fall, early next year, to have a full list of projects if we have the engineering done now, to Dan's point. Why can't we move ahead and get the design engineering done now for Tiedemann, uh, Stricker, Graber? I would add in, you know, uh, the, the South Pond because even though it's some, a pond that most of us don't see on a regular basis, uh, it has filled with a large amount of sediment and I.
Mike, also the rest of the projects for the creek corridor.
And the rest of the projects for the creek corridor, but that's going to be a little bit longer term, I think, in getting that analysis completed, but.
We're working on it.
We're working on it. But we could be in a position this fall to have better numbers on all of that. But we've got to have the design engineering, uh, approval authorized by the councils that we can move ahead, get those project estimates, and then put together a list of projects for full borrowing, or maybe not full borrowing, but at least a significant borrowing to address those project needs. And by then, uh, we can't make any promises, but we think that we will have, um, preliminary indications from FEMA late this year on what will be reimbursed. So I, I think we've all been pretty cautious, understandably, but the dynamic changed dramatically two months ago when the referendum was approved.
I have a question for both Graber and Tiedemann and Stricker. Are those eligible for FEMA reimbursement since there wasn't damage to an engineered structure there?
For an addition.
That's.
Eligible mitigation funding.
I'm going to let Bill address the mitigation. He's much more versed at that.
Matt and Sean can help if I, I miss any details here. Uh, first of all, um, the FEMA public assistance will only provide funding for damaged public structures that were engineered. Uh, they do provide assistance for emergency protective measures. So we are submitting items for some of the temporary emergency pumping at Tiedemann and what we're planning to do for Graber. But under the public assistance program, they wouldn't fund, uh, the long-term solutions that we're talking about, for example, at Tiedemann and Stricker Ponds. There is a separate program through the, that's administered by the state of Wisconsin for Hazard Mitigation Grant Program. That program does allow funding for mitigation efforts that does not have to be a damaged facility. The city had applied for, uh, projects at Graber and Tiedemann under that, and those were not funded. Um, all of the funding for that program was directed statewide to projects where properties that were flooded are being acquired and, um, being relocated. Yes, thank you. If those, if there's another round for funding for those, we certainly would apply for those. Uh, but at this point, we don't have any mitigation funding available for those projects.
Sean, you want to say? Matt, you want to speak?
I would just add that we included the damage to the boardwalks at both Tiedemann and Graber and, and some of the trail surfaces, and we're hopeful to be reimbursed for those at that 87 and a half percent.
Thank you, Matt. Sean, you had something to say? Okay. No. Yes, good.
Um, Mark, you had mentioned this 460,000 as matching funds for the grants.
There are existing DNR grants that we have the money in-house. And they are identified projects. I believe they are already engineered. And what it, what they need are a, a city source of matching funds. Right? So that's what the, the utility board's intent was to use that money for, was to get as much of that, use as much of that as matching funds for the DNR grants in-house.
Was that the, the grants that they were just talking about in the Tiedemann's, wasn't it? It's a different set of grants, okay?
Different set of grants.
The grants that you were talking about, are those funded 100%?
No. I think they're 50% match by the DNR.
Yeah.
If I could just clarify, those grants are through the DNR, um, I'm going to forget the urban non-point source grant program. Um, that what happened is the city's had a long history of working with the DNR on, on creek stabilization throughout the creek corridor. And when the DNR learned of the damage, because they've used Middleton as a demonstration site for other communities doing stream bank work, they re-awarded the grants that they'd previously awarded, um, to assist us in restoring the stream bank. It's our, our thought that because those are previously engineered, that we could use the grant money and city funding, and then eventually be reimbursed from FEMA, at least at the 87 and a half percent, uh, on those projects. And though, although those projects were engineered, um, originally, we do need design work to be completed for those projects because conditions have, have gravely changed down there with the amount of stream bank erosion that's occurred.
So how long would that take?
The design work?
Yes.
Um, I, I think it, it's complicated because if we turned around and awarded the design work to the firm that did all the original design work, I think it could be turned around very quickly. To be eligible for FEMA reimbursement, we have to go through the FEMA process of soliciting design proposals, selecting a vendor, and then awarding contracts for design. So, um, i- if we want to be, and I think we want to take every advantage we can of being reimbursed by FEMA, we want to follow that process. So I think it's complicated in that we need a funding source to match the DNR grant for the eventual hopeful reimbursement from FEMA.
So how much, Matt, of that 460 were you hopeful to use for that purpose? Matching purpose?
So the, I, I think the Stormwater Board has talked more about this, and, and I'm probably speaking out of turn just because I'm, I, the DNR originally contacted me, and I forwarded that information to Gary. I believe the total award of grants was somewhere in the 800 and 900,000 dollar range. And I think what Stormwater's done is divided those up into a couple of years. So I, I think it, and, and there's segments in the creek corridor, and then there's a segment north of Century. So I think there's a total of four different, it's either four or five grant awards for four or five different segments of the creek corridor.
So there were four grants for the damage to the original structures, and the fifth grant was the new grant. So the total money is 697 or about, close to about $7,000. So, so of course, we, you can't do the whole thing just in one year because the time which Cardinal took it was, you're talking about four or five years when these projects were done. So, so it will be, you know, in stages. By that time, we will also have money coming from FEMA. So now to answer some of the global questions here. So I know that, uh, what my goal is that, uh, it's not what happened to you, but even if we have the same amount of rain again, that we should not have the same level of damage, or we should have very minimal damage to our structures, period. That's my goal, and that's what I have been working on. So, um, so I have been meeting with the mayor, Farmer Mayor of Madison, and we had at least three, four meetings, and Madison is already vigorously working on that. They already had RFPs, and, uh, they had some presentations as well. Then, uh, so that's, uh, the South Pond. And, well, the South Fork, not just South Pond, and also the Graber and Stricker Pond as well. Then, uh, Mike and, uh, I think it was Bill or we met with, uh, and few other people, we met with Sharon Corrigan, Paul, Paul Nelson. And, uh, so we were also talking about mitigation of this problem with the North Fork because a lot of these issues, a lot of the water also come from this town of Springfield, that what can we do? So, so, so we, we talked to the county, and they have some grants and, uh, which we are going to be working on as well. And, uh, the Stormwater Resources Management Board, they had identified three different areas there, and probably the fourth one now, which possibly could be used for the, for water detention and penetration. But that's, uh, that is gaining the process. So, so I am looking at the whole city, the whole big picture, and, uh, not just, uh, just one area or the other. So Mike, you have something to say?
I just wanted to suggest that the council tonight authorized construction engineering, or not construction engineering, excuse me, design engineering for Tiedemann, Graber, Tiedemann slash Stricker, Graber, and, uh, the PBC Stream Bank as well as South Pond. I think that, as Bill has noted here, we have funds remaining. We have a short period of time yet this year before we can actually, you know, put this all together once we get real project estimates on all of these, and then a borrowing that we can do late this year or early next year, depending upon when is the most favorable time for, for borrowing. I'm looking to Bill. Uh, but I, that's what we've talked about, right?
Mike, I thought the PBC is already moving forward. What is more, what you want to do there?
There is a lot that needs to be done there.
Design engineering.
See, I, I'd make a different proposal. So you're talking, you're talking about using revenue bonds, right? Attach the utility proceeds?
And not revenue bonds, but we had talked about the potential of doing either a state trust fund loan or a bond anticipation note that could be repaid either from future revenues from the Stormwater Utility or FEMA reimbursement as it becomes available over the next, well, one to five years.
Why, why wouldn't you want to use TIF money? Yeah. It's okay. Could I please just finish? Could I use the, why couldn't, wouldn't you want to use the TIF money?
Because most of it's not TIF eligible.
Yeah.
It's borrowing TIF money. It's not using the TIF money to construct it. We can, we have that money there rather than getting the state funds. Why don't we use the TIF money? We can, we have that money there rather than getting the state funds. Why don't we use the TIF money? We will be getting two point six three million dollar in September.
Doing an advance from the TIF is something the city could consider. When we talked about the financial framework at a previous meeting, it was my recommendation that we look at using borrowing for these items. In part because we already have several advances in place using TIF dollars and we wanna consider what it looks like to an outside rating agency like Moody's when they look at the level of advances that we're holding and what the time period of those are, as well as to ensure that we aren't limiting our funds available for TIF district projects. We're in a period of relatively low interest rates and we'd be looking at what I would call a short-term borrowing of, you know, one to five years at the high end for doing a borrowing. And I think that would be a relatively low cost for the interest for that and would allow us to move forward with projects because we know that we have a revenue stream and we're hoping that we will know later this year which projects are eligible for FEMA reimbursement.
So would it have a clause that you could return it earlier if you wanted to? I mean, one to fi- let's say if we have the money, we could return it earlier, right?
I'm not sure I understand the question.
Yeah, I mean, could we have the terms or?
So I'm not talking about refinancing. So can we move on to this? What I hear is that there, there seems to be a great deal of angst of getting these things project ready. So what I would propose is that we refer this to a joint meeting of Water Resources and Stormwater Utility to come up with a plan to do this. Right? I, I take it, I, I get your point about having the ability to borrow and use it, use that funding mechanism as opposed to straight utility funds that are available for this year. So.
Sorry, go ahead.
I would make that motion to refer this to a joint meeting so that the, the two bodies can come to some agreement as to what they're gonna do. Because Water Resources seems to be doing something for pond levels. And I think, I'm not sure whether you, the Stormwater Utility has a role to play. But perhaps at that joint meeting, we can figure out what, what the policy should be.
I would second that.
I, I think, okay, we have had plenty of discussions here. We have to go forward with RFP.
There's a motion to refer which takes priority.
Okay, so.
It's been seconded.
Okay, all those in favor of the motion, any, any discussion?
I thought there was already a motion made by Kathy, seconded by me, to do the design engineering for Tiedemann and Graber. Do you press it? Okay, got it.
Okay, so you could vote no on this one. So, okay, so any discussion on this one? I would.
Roll, roll call.
Yes, yes. Yeah, Dan, go ahead.
So what, what is, you, you wish to have joint meeting? Okay, I understand a joint meeting. At which point you discuss how you wanna do the projects, but I guess my question is, what difference does it make if we move ahead with the ones that Stormwater's already said?
I still wanna do that.
And we, and then we, why is it that we can't go out to an RFP, put together an RFP and put out an RFP for the other ones?
Because there's no RFP right, ready right now. So that, that body, those, those two bodies need to get together and decide that this is an RFP that we wanna do. This is what the requests are.
Water Resources already decided that they wanted to do one on Tiedemann.
Then we should probably copy that for Strickers then.
And Graber.
And for Graber.
Yeah, well, that's why.
But they haven't been discussed by, right? So you're, you're asking for Stormwater Utility funding for something that Stormwater Utility hasn't visited. Right? It's, and, and the other two are, haven't been, been taken up by Water Resources.
I'm asking that we put out an RFP to get an idea of what the design costs would be. Then, at that point, they put in, the engineers put in proposals. We don't have to accept them. At that point, we can still do the, all the financial budgeting to determine where it's going to come from, but we have better numbers then.
We also need an RFP on South Pond.
Okay, so.
We've probably used our four hundred thousand.
Well, but that assumes that you wanna use the four hundred thousand, right? The utility board has prioritized the stream bank.
Just one percent at a time, please. Yes, go ahead, Mark.
Stormwater Utility has said the best use of that remaining money is to start working on the DNR grants. Right? We've had, so there are many city engi- there are many engineers on the, on the utility board and on Water Resources that have said the best prioritization is what we've produced here.
Yes, I will, I agree with that. I, we are getting, we have many, many projects and we need to carefully think about how we prioritize them and choose them. And none of us are stormwater engineers. We need to rely on the stormwater engineers that are on our Water Resources and Stormwater Utility Board.
Thank you.
Wouldn't it help us though to prioritize if we knew how much this was going to cost, hence the RFP?
I'm not suggesting that we don't do that. All I'm suggesting is that we, what I'm suggesting is that we pass the, the projects that are listed there and move to get Water Resources and Stormwater Utility on the same page as, as to moving forward for pond remediation.
You are going for status quo. In any case.
It's not the status quo because there is no status right now.
You got to do something.
What we're saying is that we wanna take care of this problem and you're not, you guys are just putting these obstacles in the place to, to prevent it. Give it to the bodies that are, that are tasked with doing the job.
They had nine months.
They haven't had nine months.
Of course they had nine months. It's nine months and almost nine and a half months. City has some responsibilities. City has to make.
Nobody's denying that.
Yeah.
Give the bodies that are responsible for doing the work, give them time to do the work.
Well, we are. The Storm Water Sources Management Board recommended the RFP for Tiedemann Pond as well as the Graber Pond as a second priority.
Not recommend that. Stormwater Utility recommended the, the four projects there.
Water Sources Management Board, I'm saying.
They do not have control over the spending by the Stormwater Utility Board.
I, I don't know who, what city council does. Okay, any other relevant discussion? So, so the motion, anybody else want to?
Yeah, go ahead. Man, it's so complicated, but right now we have a list of numbers. You don't know what's coming from FEMA. You don't know what's coming from here or there. So it totals up to this and we're gonna use that for grants. I just think that by the time we get FEMA back and we can borrow against some things, that there will be room for all of these things.
Absolutely.
Nobody's suggesting that there's not.
I know.
What we're suggesting is that there's, we have the prioritization here. I understand you, we want, we need to get the ponds in the mix. Give Water Resources and the Stormwater Utility Board the opportunity to weigh in on how to do it.
When's the next Stormwater Utility, or when, when will we have this meeting ideally?
The third Wednesday in June.
We can ask Gary to, to set it.
Or a special meeting.
Yeah.
Okay, again, one at a time, please. So Luke, they already had a meeting and they decided not to discuss it. I was at that meeting.
I wish I was at the same meeting you were at because that's not what happened.
Well, were these presented there? You had this sheet there, right? And you had an opportunity to discuss it.
We did discuss it.
And decided not to.
We discussed it.
We discussed it.
Yeah, discussed those two items and then you moved on.
Can I hear what Mike?
Yes, Mike, go ahead.
I wanted to suggest that you authorize, that the council authorize, design engineering for the ponds, all of the ones we've talked about. Tiedemann, Stricker, Graber, so that we can move ahead with the RFPs, bring back estimated costs.
Mike, where are the RFPs?
They're yet to be written.
Shouldn't Water Resources have some input into the RFPs as to what's being requested?
Water Resources has suggested Tiedemann and Stricker Pond.
But as to what should be included in it?
I, yeah, they did.
No, I was at that meeting. They just said this was a good idea to do an RFP. They didn't give any specific information.
Now Warren Giebert said from that meeting, there were three items talked about. He put in an email to me and I discussed it with Gary Huth. It's not in the minutes, but there were three.
What are the conditions that they want to put in for those three ponds? What kind of?
So, well, before you get there, are you suggesting that Warren is the one dictating?
No.
The minutes of a meeting?
But he's on the Stormwater Utility Board too.
I get that, but if it's not documented in the minutes and they haven't discussed it or agreed upon it, then it doesn't exist.
And Warren wasn't at the last Stormwater Utility Board meeting.
All I'm saying is that the council can authorize funds. The Stormwater Utility Board and Water Resources, like you're suggesting, can discuss priorities. But ultimately, this body is in charge of the funds of the Stormwater Utility. And if you want to send a message that you wanna get this stuff done, to me, that's the easiest way to do it. And have it go to those committees to make more specific recommendations. In the meantime, staff will be working on the RFPs based on the best knowledge that we have.
Can we also include if we're going to do this, South Pond? I mean, South Pond is incredibly important to this thing.
I would hope you would.
Yeah, well, you left it off your list.
I said the ponds we've discussed.
And listed three.
And I got cut off. So, yes, South Pond.
We need to get South Pond?
Yes, Pheasant Branch, Stream Bank, Stabilization, all of those so that we can move ahead, get back, design engineering costs, bring that to the council, get some numbers so that we can do a borrowing this fall and get things moving.
And will, does that mean that we will then immediately start on all of those or do we need to prioritize based on cost and so on?
We could, we could put out several RFPs with design engineering. We could do it. It's gonna take some time, yes.
If we get the RFPs back though, we also are going to need to prioritize which ones get to done first.
Right, and you'll be able to do that. You'll be able to do that once we get some design engineering estimates.
Okay. Mike, are you done, Emily?
I, I just.
This is more of a question about tactics.
Excuse me, Emily has it, she comes first.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mike, I, I think that's a reasonable suggestion and I know that Dan made a like comment before. I think it's very important to move, to show that we support the city. I understand that tactically, people wanna move in a certain order and I generally abide by that. However, the Thousand Year Flood really shook up the community. I, I can tell you, people stopped walking in my neighborhood. And they don't go to the conservancy anymore. And it's frustrating. The kids can't get out and it's hard. And I'm sure the people that live near ponds feel the same way. So I think in light of that, I think the suggestion is reasonable to consider the RFPs tonight.
Thank you.
And engineering?
Well, Mark and then Kathy. Mark, you have something to say? Okay, Kathy, go ahead.
Well, they, you've referred, you've made a motion to refer this to Stormwater and Water Resources. How would adding the process to sit the RFPs and engineering, would that be part of your motion or is that a separate?
You instruct them to un, to come back to council with some type of funding request to get the RFPs out. Right? They have to be paid for.
We're asking for two to three weeks before we send out the RFP.
Could you please raise your hand when you want to speak? I mean, again, one person at a time and.
Go for deep. Why don't you just take a, take a breath, okay?
Well, I, I mean, we got to keep the courtroom here. I mean, you know, it's just, just not conversing two people with each other. Okay, so I think, does anybody else have any comments or questions?
How much does it cost to do an RFP?
We don't know.
Don't know.
Don't know how much it costs just to write out an RFP and send it out?
Correct.
Asking.
It's not.
RFP, excuse me, go ahead.
Normally, it's done by our consultants.
Yeah.
Okay, in this case, staff is writing it and there's a staff.
No, I, I'm assuming that the consultants drafted the first RFP.
Is the cost like a thousand or ten thousand?
In, in this particular case, for an RFP to request engineering services for ponds, we would typically write that ourselves. For a really complicated project, we would typically ask a consultant to draft that for us and then we would edit it before it goes out so that it, it can hopefully eliminate any favoritism that might be embedded otherwise in it.
So I've been told there's a lot to digging a hole in the ground. So is this a simple RFP that staff can do? Or is this something that a consultant needs to do?
This would be at a staff level. So staff wrote the RFPs, for instance, for most of our road projects, for Baskerville Harbor, the sheet piling failure up there. And I would envision that staff would write this. Part of, part of what has complicated things in my part of City Hall is that we're dealing with road projects, multiple road projects. Still some flood repair issues, some FEMA paperwork issues and the desire to issue more RFPs. It's not a money issue from my perspective. It's a time issue.
So then you don't have the capacity at this point to put an RFP out?
I heard from Mike that he heard from Gary that he was committed to doing it within a week. I just know that a lot of things keep coming in on a nearly daily basis. And so that's why I didn't wanna commit to anything.
So Gary's committed to spending staff time only to get an RFP out?
Well, I think he's got plenty of other things going on, but his, what I heard from Mike is that his conversation with Mike was that he could do it in seven days.
So we're not talking about any cost to the city at this point?
Not any direct outlay, no.
Fine, do it.
So are you going to, okay, but does somebody want to make a?
Well, I think we have to vote on Mark's motion, right?
I withdraw the motion. I'll withdraw the motion. Actually, no, I think we still need to have that.
Yeah, I think we do.
We still need the referral to both.
Okay, so if you want to move forward, you, okay.
I have a question. Is it, is it his first and then referring or is it referring first?
No, it's voting on the motion to refer to the Stormwater Utilities and if that fails, then we move to the other one.
The motion to refer could also be a motion to amend the, the main motion. The main motion being to provide authorization for RFPs, construction, excuse me, design engineering for the various projects we discussed and to refer to the, a joint committee of Water Resources and Stormwater Utility Board to meet to discuss.
For input on the RFPs?
Yes.
Who made that motion?
As long as there's no city outlay of funds to do the RFP submit. Right? That's what I heard, that they were gonna be done in-house.
Well, even if there's a minimal outlay.
No, that's not what we heard. What we heard was that it was gonna cost the city nothing but staff time.
Yes, I heard that too. If there's a cost of a thousand dollar, you're gonna be discussing this again.
I do think South Pond and the Pheasant Branch Creek will be a little bit more complicated. I don't know if we can do the RFPs in-house for those.
No, I was talking about ponds here.
Right.
We're talking about the four ponds, right? We're talking about Stricker, Graber, Stricker, Tiedemann and South Pond.
Okay.
Any damage to the other pond?
I'm sorry, what did you say?
Where's the, the other pond that's at Esser? Was there any damage to Esser?
No, no, the asset is in good shape.
Well, there's some sediment in it, but that's not high on our priority list right now. Sorry, I'm sorry.
Esser Pond has some, some sedimentation in it, but it's not high on our priority list. We'll have to do something with it at some point, but not this year.
So as long as Gary's not costing the city any money, why wouldn't he put the, an RFP for fixing that out as well?
Well, again, we have some priority issues. If the council directs that these are high priority issues, we'll have to redirect staff time from the other things that we're currently working on.
I have a question.
Susan?
Has, there were issues with Esser Pond and getting it draining into South Pond and so on. Have those been resolved adequately?
On a temporary basis, yes.
That's what my concern is. So if we have another major flood with all that water coming from Madison, we could have problems in Esser Pond.
It isn't a high water level issue. It's a low water level issue. That's been temporarily addressed.
So do you want to amend it?
Who made the motion?
Mark did. I, it's, I, I would make that amendment.
Okay, so can we read back the, what the motion is gonna be then, please?
So it's, it's to approve the list here and to direct staff?
It's not the list. It's the, only the ponds.
Yes.
No, it's not. It's to approve the list of, of current and pending projects as recommended by Stormwater Utility and to have staff create the RFPs for, for taking care of the remediation of the ponds.
Mark, I, the Stormwater Utility minute said just for Donna Drive Pond, Park Street and for the Pheasant Branch Creek Corridor. and for the Pheasant Branch Creek corridor. So I thought we were talking about ponds in addition to that.
Didn't I say that?
No, you said that Stormwater recommended.
Stormwater recommended Donna Drive, Park Street tow protection to reuse the remaining funds for the DNR match. But I'm adding to that, what the amendment was, was to add to that to have in-house creation of the RFPs.
For the ponds.
For Tiedemann's, Stricker, Graber, and South Pond.
Is that?
And referral to the committees.
Yes, joint meeting.
Okay, is that, Michelle, is, you got that all there?
Enough.
So approve, the motion is to approve what Stormwater recommends, the current pending projects, and have in-house staff create RFPs for the ponds and refer to a joint meeting.
Okay. That's what we are voting, voting on. Any other questions or comments? Okay, all those in favor of the, aye?
We don't have a second. I seconded it, okay.
Okay, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The motion passes.
Okay, before you do anything, let's hold on to the ERU ordinance.
Okay, okay. Okay, all right. So the next one, we are going to vote on the, where is, what, where is that one?
Recommendations number two.
Really?
Yes.
Okay, we are going to go to the recommendations number two. This is the ERU rate recommendation for ordinance amendment to the common council.
Move approval is recommended by the Stormwater Utility Board and Finance. Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor of this motion, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? So the motion passes. Anything else? Okay, we are on to item number one under the agreements. Aircraft hangar keeper's agreement with Mid and Hunt Hangar Lot Number 173301 Bravo Lane.
Move approval.
Second.
And Larry, I assume you've blessed this?
Um, it's a city form, so normally, I would just say, of course. But because this is actually in a circumstance where we are not simultaneously entering in a hangar land lease, I would recommend striking whereas number four from, from the agreement. And the other problem it has is while the agenda item summary sheet lists the hangar lot 17 at 3301 Bravo Lane, the document does not include that. So I would suggest adding the address and hangar lot number two, Exhibit A. That's all. Otherwise, it's.
And striking the, the fourth whereas, which is lesser unless the or something is simultaneously entering?
Correct.
Got it.
That, Larry? Could, could you repeat that?
Yeah.
More slowly?
Number one, um, the document has as its fourth recital that, that we are simultaneously entering into a hangar land lease, which is part of this. Well, they're not simultaneously doing that.
What page are you on?
The first page of the hangar land lease, page.
Oh, the fourth whereas clause?
Yeah.
To strike that.
Just strike it. And the other thing is, it doesn't actually refer in the document what land is, is affected here. And so I was suggesting adding to Exhibit A, um, the reference that's on the agenda item summary sheet. In other words, adding hangar lot 17 at 3301 Bravo Lane.
My motion included all that in it.
Hangar lot 301?
3301, yep.
Anything else?
Okay, any questions or comments? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The motion passes. So the next one is the agreement with the U.S. Geological Survey for Tax and Mental Financing District Number Three, funding for monitoring north and south forks of Pheasant Branch Creek.
Move approval is recommended by Finance.
Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The motion passes. Item number three, Stormwater Management System Maintenance Agreement with Greenway Office Park LLC, Wisconsin Trade Center 8401 Greenway Boulevard.
Move approval.
Second.
So why do we have it here? I mean, Sean, so we already had, is it a new facility or what's happening?
One of these.
To be honest, I haven't read this. Typically, this is for a relatively minor site development stormwater maintenance agreement whereby the developer agrees that they will maintain their own stormwater features. But I'm not familiar with the specifics of this address.
Okay, all right.
I have a tiny little amendment on this one as well, which is in section five, the third bullet point. It should read, Riprap shall be replaced with a D at the end of the word, and then insert the word when. If Robert's not here, someone's got to catch these things.
Well played.
There's one other change before we execute that, and that is that it is no longer Vanta Properties, it's Artist Properties. So the name of the owner will need to change, and Gary said that he was going to communicate that with their engineer.
And who is it again?
Archer.
Yeah, it's, Vance sold this property a couple of years ago.
Okay.
Okay, so your motion is with these amendments.
Yes.
Okay. All those in favor of the motion as amended, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The motion passes. Mended, item number four, amended and restated land lease and solar easement with One Energy Development LLC for property located at the Milton Airport.
Move approval.
Second.
Any questions or comments? It's just simply what FAA wanted, right?
Right.
Okay, so all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The motion passes. Ward of bed code for fashion services. Ward of bed for tow protection downstream of Park Street.
Move approval is recommended by the Stormwater Utility Board.
Second.
Any questions or comments? This is one of the approved projects, so all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The motion passes. All right, we're on to the budget. 2020 budget development calendar.
Move approval is recommended by Finance.
I'll second it.
Okay, any questions or comments? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The motion passes. Under miscellaneous, item number one, acceptance of city's 2018 comprehensive annual finance report.
Move approval is recommended by Finance.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Okay, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes. Item number two, review of the city's investment policy and approval of authorized public depositories.
Will we accept as recommended by Finance?
Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor of this motion, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Now, item number three, request to authorize the use of general contingency funds for Bowman Aquatic Center repairs.
Move approval is recommended by Finance.
Second.
Up to 30,000.
Up to 30,000.
Okay, any questions or comments? All those in favor of this motion, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Aye.
Okay, seven one, six one. We are on to planning, zoning, city's position on mine or quarry expansion in town.
Can I move that you, ask that you move to the other items and leave these two for?
Okay. All right, let's go to the recommendations proposals. Item number one, vector trailer rental for cleaning inlet manhole sumps.
Move approval is recommended by Finance and Stormwater Utility.
Second.
Any questions or comments?
I'd like to make a comment. This is something that the city has not been doing, that we are supposed to do, I think it's every six months, Sean?
Yeah, that's gone to the.
Yes.
Is that, is it every six months that we're supposed to have been doing this?
We, we've tended to get to our sumps once a year and some of them twice a year. But from what I heard from Gary, we haven't done this for a number of years.
Like three years, we haven't done it. So I think we need to pay attention to, are we meeting requirements? And this has been reported that we've been doing it on our reports to the DNR or the state.
To the state.
Yeah. That we have been doing it and we haven't.
Yes, this is a good thing to do, yes. Okay, all those in favor of this motion, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The motion passes. We are on to resolutions.
Still one.
So Resolution 2019 dash 28, 28.
Did we?
Forming.
Did we do the ERU rate?
Yes, we did, yeah.
Oh, sorry, sorry.
Forming the principles of fundamental human rights and equality for women in our community and supporting the United States Radification of the Convention on the Elimination of All Forms of Discrimination Against Women. Yes, need a, need a second.
I'll take, I'll second it.
No, you, you made the motion. Who made the?
I'll make the motion.
Okay, need a second.
I'll second.
So this is amazing that the women got the right to vote in 19, Wisconsin was the first state in the nation in 1919 to give the right to vote to the women. And this is 2019. It's 2019, 100 years. And it's about time, it's about time. I think we give the, and it's interesting that this is the, in, this was one of the UN resolutions, and I think US is one of the six countries which did not approve this one. 187 dead. Okay, anyway, all those in favor of this motion, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Well, this is great day for Middleton. So I had a conversation with the mayor of Madison, and they voted on this about two weeks ago. So we are in a great company. All right, uh, we already passed the number two. Back to planning and zoning. Well, the easy one is city's position or future of the Belle Fontaine Boulevard planning. Mark, or do we just want to do something on this one, or is there just further information?
It is up to the council if they wish to provide any direction to staff. I just wanted to make sure that with the quarry project and the acre farm proposal from the county, that the council's aware that we have Belle Fontaine mapped through the acre property, and the county's, um, agreement to purchase the property would likely mean that Belle Fontaine Boulevard would not be able to go through the property anymore.
Susan?
I would like to suggest that we approach the county with the concept of putting Belle Fontaine through the property. It would be a great way to get citizens into the area so they can do recreation instead of making a very complicated road that goes to Pheasant Branch north on Pheasant Branch to Ballser. Why not have Belle Fontaine can go through the county property?
Yeah, the county isn't going to pay for it. So it's, you're talking about a lot of money here.
We, I think, should ask them.
Why would they pay for it, so?
I think we need to ask them to let them know that we're not happy with this, and that they didn't consult us before doing the purchase.
Yes, Mike, you have something to say?
Uh, Mark, remind me, the county board's going to be taking this up on Thursday. Uh, I would agree, the county's unlikely to fund our road through, through their property. The, in justice context for, I think most of the council's probably not aware, but we plan on this to be a developer-built road from the get-go. And Misty Valley was the first leg of that, and the development paid for two lanes, but we secured two more additional lanes for long-term planning for right-of-way purposes so that we wouldn't have to buy more road down, or more right-of-way down the road, but instead have it built in to the initial development. With the acre farm taken out of the equation, there's potential for four lanes of right-of-way being necessary. I believe just from my preliminary discussions with county officials, it's highly unlikely that they would agree. We could certainly ask them, but that's a huge chunk of money to fund.
I'm more concerned that they need to get the message to work with us on some of these purchases instead of us finding out through a press release.
So are you really asking, you're not asking them to fund the road? I think what you're really asking is that they provide us an easement to, to build our own road. Is that right? They're, we're asking them for the right-of-way, not to fund the road, but to, to essentially dedicate a right-of-way to the city of Middleton.
Right, we'd be looking for four lanes of right-of-way with a median, so it's a significant amount of property through the acre farm.
Going in the middle of the nature Conservancy, that's, that would be interesting.
So would this, Mike, would this be a continuation of the road that currently dead-ends in the middle of Misty Valley?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
So I, I can just, for everyone's edification, I, I know there's pretty strong opposition to the extension of that road by residents of the Middleton Ridge or Misty Valley neighborhood for fear of increased traffic, and it's kind of, it bisects that neighborhood into two, and there's obviously a lot of children and traffic or walk that walk across that lane is currently, so that would definitely be a consideration.
Awful, thank you.
Mayor, may I comment about that?
Go ahead.
Not too close.
One is good enough, don't need two, right?
One, Mike.
Mark, we can't hear you.
Alder Fassard, uh, we, uh, have this challenge all the time when we have new development and plan our, our transportation infrastructure. About what, 10, 12 years ago, I would guess, that we mapped Belle Fontaine, and we had a debate, and I wish Sean were still here, but he would explain this too. Uh, we had a debate about how Belle Fontaine would be built through Misty Valley, now called Middleton Ridge. And we ended up with the design that you see today specifically so that people would know, crystal clear, the first person moving in would know that this was going to be an expanded roadway in the future. The other option would have been to put the road down the middle and, and have wide terraces, you know, so, and it wouldn't have been as obvious that the road would be expanded. But we put the road on the north side and left the south side with the sidewalk way across, you know, the big gap to the sidewalk so that it would be very clear that, what the city's plans were. There could be, I think, a case made that maybe we don't need to have a four-lane road, but the city mapped it and assumed it would become a four-lane road. Speaking to Alder West's concern about the alignment on Pheasant Branch Road, I think maybe to elaborate, you, I think, have a map in your packet, and I thought it was going to be on the screen, but I, I guess it's just in your packet, showing our officially-mapped route. Just because the route is officially mapped there doesn't mean it actually has to go there. We did that, again, a dozen years ago to provide notice to the public and to property owners that the city has the expectation of, of needing this major transportation corridor on the north side of the Conservancy because right now, our main connection is Century Avenue. So this idea of where that road will be is, it's officially mapped, but with development that, you know, that could be shifted with, by agreement with the property owners and the developers. Now, in the case of the county parcel, the plan for the acre farm, you know, that road doesn't have to be exactly there. We just want to make sure that we can implement that roadway in the future. If it's not accommodated across the acre farm, it will have to be up at Ballser Road. How Belle Fontaine gets to Ballser Road would be, one option would be to go along Pheasant Branch Road, as Alder West mentioned, or you go somewhere between High Road and Pheasant Branch Road and find your way up there.
And there's many residents in District Six that are opposed to increasing traffic on Pheasant Branch Road.
Sure.
And there's a huge problem that I noticed tonight trying to get here on Frank Lloyd Wright going out onto Century, there was traffic backed up past the Pheasant Branch Road intersection. That's a tough place to get out of, and we need to be careful in terms of where we route traffic. But I still think, bottom line, we need to let the county know, we should have been brought in. brought in earlier on the purchase of this land.
Definitely.
Okay, after Susan, Mike?
The bigger picture in the planning for this area was the concern by the city council some twenty years ago, that all of that traffic on Q funnels through Middleton, Century Avenue, Allen Boulevard, and then our side streets through our residential districts, and that we need to be planning on the north side for a connection. This was meant to stem that traffic for future, and, and we can see how it's building on K already. And without this road, and without now, the county is not funding a North Mendota Parkway, and DOT's even saying that it's not a priority for them, they're looking on the south side of Madison for a, for a throughway. We don't have any other solutions on the north side for a traffic connection. That means more traffic on Q, on Century, and Allen Boulevard, most certainly.
So, Mike, what is the possibility of working with DOT or working with county to getting the North Mendota Parkway? I mean, that's, that's the real answer.
We worked on that for several years, we had an intergovernmental agreement, we mapped our portion of it, the corridor, but without the county taking the initiative to fund the North Mendota Parkway, it's not ever going to happen, because you have several municipalities throughout that entire area. And it's like seven different, we'd have to have an intergovernmental agreement among the towns, the cities, the villages, like DeForest, and ideally the county to take the lead to get, get the road built. And I just don't see the political initiative to do that. The county has invested in improvements to K, and I think that's the, the path they're taking, K and, and Q as well.
And M, they're also approving M, so...
And M, right.
Okay, so this is more like information, Mark, that, that's all you wanted here?
At the staff level, we just wanted to make sure that you, as the decision-makers, were aware of this and that you had an opportunity to provide comments. I think that was our main...
Is there anything, Mark, in, going to the quarry issue in particular, is there any, anything that we can do as a council that would help you in articulating Middleton's concern about this project?
That's the item number one, and we are getting to it, so...
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought we were talking about both, both.
Okay, so, Mark, go ahead and go to item number, city position on mine hole quarry expansion in town of Springfield.
I, I thought it'd be useful just to review what's before you. A few weeks ago, about the same time as the acre farm, we found out about this reclamation, modification of the reclamation, reclamation plan for the quarry. And so the planning commission last week weighed in on it, expressing the position that Dane County fully investigate all environmental and stormwater effects and operational concerns. Wayne Furtahert, one of our planning commission members, offered to and, and did write a letter that is in your packet, an email, and I thought I would focus on that briefly. The, it's, his recommendation was that the, the bottom line, I encourage the Middleton to request a local hearing. Well, my understanding is that hearing is going to be scheduled now, at the request of the town of Springfield as well, and that the county's planning to do that. And then, under procedural issues, Mr. Furtahert mentioned that there should be a, the current, in effect, permit and reclamation plan should be obtained and reviewed to clarify the spatial limits and requirements for previously-approved non-mineral extraction. Well, that's where Roger Lane, who's the county zoning administrator, he wrote an email which Alder Fassard brought to your attention today, and I appreciated that he sent that to us, I hadn't heard about this. So that's now turning to the email that you received from Mike Davis late afternoon, and I don't know if that's at your places, is that at your places?
No.
It's not, okay. And I, I only saw the email right before the meeting. So that email basically is a response to attorney Mark Hazel Baker, who is the legal counsel advising the town of Springfield, and Roger Lane, the county zoning administrator, essentially addressed and provided maps about, to try and clarify the legal status of various components of the quarry parcels. I, I'm not, I didn't write this letter, so I, I'm not, you know, up to speed on everything, but I do know it looks like they're having a special meeting tomorrow at the town of...
Correct, seven thirty.
At seven thirty?
Yep.
What, why, the reason this is before you here tonight is just the same as the other, the acre farm, is we thought this does have an effect on our growth area and popular, residents of the Misty Valley, Middleton Ridge subdivision, and so we wanted to make sure the council had the opportunity to express any concerns. So you may have other remarks, since it's your district.
Yeah, no, I, I think the, there's a great deal of concern, and just so, as I mentioned, there's a meeting tomorrow night at the town of Springfield at seven thirty PM, representatives from Yahara Materials have committed to be there. The town of Springfield, from my understanding, and Mark, please correct me if I'm wrong, has actually requested that the project be delayed, but the Yahara Materials has denied that request. And so that's continuing to move forward, and so there is some, Dane County still has the opportunity to do some reclamation and some permits, but the, there's some legal ambiguity about whether or not there's any other recourse for even just delaying or slowing down this project. So there's a lot of folks that are really, really concerned in the town of Springfield, but also in particular with the Middleton Ridge neighborhood, and I think that those concerns are very warranted.
So do we want to make a motion to express our concerns, or do we just, there's a public hearing tomorrow, or leave it up to that?
So I, I will, I'm planning on attending the public hearing tomorrow, and I will vocally express our concern on behalf of the city of Middleton.
All right.
I will support that.
Yes, Mike? Do you?
Yes.
You want to make a motion?
I would make that motion.
Okay, so does somebody second it?
I second it.
Okay, so any further questions or discussion?
That's to express the concerns as Mark outlined from Wayne Furtahert?
And Wayne, yeah.
Yeah, he has six points, which he made in that letter. So, okay, all those in favor of this motion to expressing our concern tomorrow at the hearing, say aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed, so the motion passes, need a motion to adjourn?
Mayor?
Yes, Mike?
Because we have it on the agenda, because it's an important long-term concern for the mapping of Belle Fontaine, I would be inclined to have the planning staff and public work staff work toward a reconfiguration of Belle Fontaine for our official map. We can reconfigure it around the acre farm and two Ballsa Road. And so I just, I wanted to mention that, if there's opposition from that, for that now, I, I know Luke said that neighbors, residents in Middleton Ridge were concerned about the roadway going through. One of the concerns I'd have is, you know, we built municipal operations center on the basis that it could serve that area, and it's not going to very well be able to serve that area without a road that connects to the northeast side. And like I mentioned, the traffic concerns before. So I'd be inclined to get the planning staff, public work staff, working on remapping that, notwithstanding Luke's concerns.
But it won't be the highest priority, I mean, it's, you know, it's...
No, we've got lots of other high priorities that we talked about earlier tonight.
Yes, that's right. Okay, any other questions or comments? Anybody else want to say?
On a motion to that, to that effect, Mike?
If you're inclined, I, I'd appreciate that.
Make a motion that we direct staff to look at ways to reroute Belle Fontaine.
To, to work on amending the city official map, relocate Belle Fontaine.
That's exactly what I said.
Okay, need a second.
In my head.
I'll second.
Would, just point of clarification, would that, would it then become back to the city council for final approval?
Yes.
Got it.
It's an ordinance.
Got it.
Okay, any other questions or comments? All those in favor of this motion, say aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed, or not, any? Kathy? So anybody has anything else to say, otherwise motion to adjourn?
Make the motion.
Okay, need a second, we are adjourned. Thank you.